Thank you. Is Kathy ready? Ready?
My recorder doesn't work.
Okay. It's okay? Okay, roll call, please. Quiet, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Vatterlaus?
Here.
Councilmember DeGree?
President.
Mayor Protem Keener?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here.
Okay, salute to the flag led by Councilmember Martin. Okay, there was no closed session. Special presentations? We have none except to introduce on TV our new city manager, Kevin Woodhouse. Today was his first day, and I don't know, do you want to give a brief introduction of your past? Checkered that it might be?
With pleasure. Thank you, Mayor O'Neil and councilmembers. Kevin Woodhouse, and I came the most recent four years from the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District.
Hit the mic up a little closer, Kevin.
The mics are pretty bad. You have to hold it closer.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm learning a lot of details in Pacifica. Again, Kevin Woodhouse, and I came most recently from the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District where I was Assistant General Manager for the last four years overseeing the Land and Facilities Services Department and Visitor Services and the National Resources Department, and in the past, Human Resources. Prior to that, I worked for the City of Mountain View for 23 years, ending there most recently as the Deputy City Manager. So, pleasure to be here, was really pleased to meet many community members at the reception tonight, and I want to thank the mayor and the council for throwing that reception.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Next item, we wish you the best of luck in your new position. Next item is the consent calendar. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Those wishing to address the council on any item listed on the agenda should submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Items on the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion unless a council member or person in the audience requests before the vote on the motion to have an item discussed. Time limit on comments is three minutes or less. I do have one card to pull item number four off the agenda. Is there any other councilpeople that want to?
I just wanted to make a comment about item number three, which was the email that we had received today. I don't think we need to pull it off, but I just wanted to make a note that we did receive an email about consideration of the ADUs.
Okay, thank you. So, they need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt items one through three of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second.
Okay, that's motioned by Keener, seconded by Vatterlaus. Please vote. And that item passes five to zero. Next is Tiger for item number four in the consent calendar.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jaz Twirls, Big Stick of Pacifica. SB 54 got signed into law by Mayor Brown on Thursday. As a Californian, I am proud of that fact. In general, I believe it is not good policymaking to put into place a policy that has already been put into policy by the state since it is already done. It seems needless as it's virtually the exact same law, and because of that, I'm inclined to urge you all to vote no on it. That being said, a friend of mine posted something to social media this week that immediately sparked something inside of me. In part, he wrote, "Y'all, I have this to say because if we are not honest with each other about how we are coping in this firestorm of a world, we cannot help our collective community through it. I am not okay in light of the news out of Washington this week like existentially not okay. I am scared for my family, I am scared for my friends, I am scared for myself. I am a queer, disabled, trans man. Will I survive this administration? Will my communities? Can we even stay in our home country safely? How close are we into needing to seek asylum, to becoming refugees? Will the rest of the country finally believe us when we say we are in danger? That our problem with the current regime is not just political, but deeply, deeply personal? That lives are at stake and being lost daily? These are the honest questions in my heart tonight, friends, and I am not okay." And when I read that, my conception of sanctuary city, even though it seems needless within the context of California law, shifted a little bit. The idea of a symbol is very, very powerful, and while we're all covered by the same law in California by saying to the residents of this city, "We are a community who takes care of each other no matter what, and here in this community we are safe," my thought pattern shifted. Not that I believe it's great policymaking. I don't believe there is a laurel here to rest upon. So far, in essence, not much is being done by voting this into law tonight, but if you are sincere in the wish to do more than mollify and assuage ever-growing fear in our community, you must use this as an opportunity to educate about what these protections mean, just as it would be if merely you had not called this state law by any other name. If there is virtue to be found in doing this in the name of the city, it is that we may disseminate the information all the quicker than if we were merely state. I would suggest having informational flyers printed up at once that are distributed to libraries, churches, schools, the PRC, senior center, Chamber of Commerce businesses, the police station, everything city, an ad campaign in the Tribune, PCT, QFM, and it might be a good idea to create a city services educational program including fire, public works, and the police, a component of which being teaching students of all ages what it means that their state, that their city is sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. Julie Starben, city attorney, question? I have a question?
Yes.
Okay. When I called up Tiger, we had one card for sanctuary city, now we have a whole stack of them. He got three minutes. Can we reduce these to two minutes, or is that legal or not legal?
They all get three minutes.
They all get three minutes, okay. Julie Starben, please. Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, I just, I want to say how important Pacifica becoming a sanctuary city is. It's great that SB 54 passed, but there is a need for us, Pacifica, to state that we want to take care of each other, that we want to keep each other safe, that we want to stand up to bullies. And I wanted to reiterate that the risk of Pacifica losing funds because of sanctuary city is very low, and Trump is trying to cut money for all social services anyway. Doesn't matter whether you're a sanctuary city or not. It has nothing to do with that, and all recent court decisions have gone against the federal government. ICE has no interest in safety of this country. Their only goal is to deport as many people as possible. There are over 400 cities and counties and a couple of states across the country that have some restriction on police collaboration with ICE, and this is actually reduced deportations, not increased deportations. We just need to stand up to bullies, and it's more important than ever, from ICE raids to normalization of police killings, to the recent resurgence of Nazi activity and the far right. It's on us to take care of each other.
Ruthie O'Phil, Suzanne Moore, DeGould.
Hi, I am Ruth O'Phillips, Pacifica resident and Local Two member, and I'm here to talk about being in favor for the sanctuary city ordinance. I know we finally were, you know, able to pass it 3-2 last two weeks ago, and I'm kind of disappointed that, you know, now we're here watching it get up for debate again, right? But just to kind of reiterate some of the points we touched on the last time we were here, making Pacifica a sanctuary city would protect all immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers regardless of their legal status, defends their legal and constitutional rights, and refuses cooperation with ICE on the basis of a person's immigration status. The Pacifica City Council goals include making Pacifica a compassionate city, and the sanctuary city ordinance will further that goal, showing justice and compassion to people in need and supporting Pacifica in which all people are included. It would protect and support people seeking work in our city. Actually, I, so, from the Institute of Taxation and Economic Policy in 2016, undocumented immigrants do pay taxes, an estimated $11.4 billion in state and local taxes per year. So, you know, repealing any sanctuary city ordinance, we would, if it's about funding, it really isn't. We stand to lose more by losing immigrants in our community. They're valuable, immigrants are valuable and essential members of Pacifica who contribute to our vibrant culture and power and our economic engine, and several thousand immigrants work and live in Pacifica. A relationship of trust between the city's immigrant community and local law enforcement is central to the public safety of Pacifica. When local law enforcement agencies are tangled with federal immigration enforcement programs, immigrant community members are afraid to approach police when they are victims and witnesses to crimes. And just to reiterate some of the things I mentioned last time we were here, you know, this is as much about sending a message about who we are as a city. We need to stand with immigrants in Pacifica. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Moore, DeGould, Chaya Gordon.
Good evening, Suzanne Moore. In the last month, residents of Pacifica have told stories of immigrant community, and I was privileged to hear their moving stories about past mistakes, current fears, and future hopes. Advocacy is lending voice to those who have none. I am proud of the courage demonstrated by our council to take voice along with that of our state legislators and our governor. Please vote for sanctuary city, and I have to admit, Ruth said everything that I think I said last time, so, thank you, Ruth.
DeGould, Chaya Gordon, Blue Murrow.
Good evening. My name is DeGould. I live in Pacific Manor, and I thank those of you who listened to us throughout the previous two city council meetings and have read our correspondence, and I ask you to recall all of that testimony that was provided because these high school students and these college students and these people who work for a living can't keep showing up to meetings to say the same thing to you, so I ask you to remember what they told you. SB 54 is signed, and it will be in full effect on January 1st. Every jurisdiction in California will now have to meet certain requirements limiting participation with immigration enforcement. This law and our ordinance are intended to ensure that immigrants are not deterred by fear of deportation from contacting the Pacifica police or seeking other public services. Our ordinance describes how Pacifica will implement that new law and also prevents the use of Pacifica's data for creation of discriminatory registries such as the so-called Muslim registry, as have been advocated by the federal administration. It provides our public officials, including librarians and other city employees, with a procedure they are to follow if ICE shows up. It also takes steps to protect private data that is currently held by city agencies. People, including some on this council, have speculated that Pacifica may lose federal funding by adopting this ordinance. The state has now taken that on. And right now, there are two federal injunctions and a whole bunch of Supreme Court decisions that says, no, they can't take away our emergency funding, or our school funding, or our Meals on Wheels, or any other of that funding. Yeah, there are threats, but if we have learned anything in my lifetime, it has to be that bullying and threats cannot be the basis for sound public policy. I just want to say that in addition to this ordinance, Pacifica Social Justice, Faith in Action, and other community groups are organizing on the ground to ensure that everybody's rights are observed should federal agents come to our town. We are part of the Regional Rapid Response Network, which is working with attorneys and nonprofits to ensure that everyone facing immigration proceedings has legal representation. We will be organizing training programs in the next few months for other people who want to participate. I hope that you will confirm your adoption of this ordinance tonight. We have to take this first step as a community. Thank you for your attention.
Chaya Gordon, Blue Murrow, and Denny Asness.
Good evening, everyone. Chaya Gordon, Pacifica Social Justice. There's some misconceptions about the relationship between the state so-called sanctuary bill, the California Values Act, and the local ordinance that is the subject here tonight, so I just want to reiterate that they are complementary, and SB 54, which was signed by the governor last week, specifically expects local ordinances to complement it. And in our case, there are provisions in the Pacifica ordinance, which the city attorney did not find any problem with, that make it more specific and stronger in some areas, and I don't have time to go into that, but this is a good thing, and they can work together, and they're definitely both out to achieve the same goal, which is to make California safe for immigrants. And if you vote to pass the Pacifica ordinance tonight, that will happen. I also want to say a word on some of the misconceptions about the federal funding, which is, as DeG just said, there are two executive orders. The first one addressed the initial, I mean, there's one executive order. There are two injunctions. They are both nationwide injunctions. They address different specifics, and they were put in place by two different federal judges on the grounds that the merits of the cases were likely to succeed. And the reason for that, in the first order by Judge Oric of San Francisco, is that the order violated the separation of powers clause of the U.S. Constitution and the Fifth and Tenth Amendments. Now, that is an injunction, but it is very unlikely that that injunction is going to be lifted, so I'd just like you to think about that because these are constitutional issues, and they're not so debatable, as well, there are Supreme Court rulings. So, this is a time, we all know, there's persecution and harsh discrimination against immigrants, and it's becoming not just common, but the law of the land, and the ICE raids, which started in the spring, are continuing. So, I'd like to ask you pretty much the same question I asked you two weeks ago, which is, when the history of this reign of terror for immigrants is discussed, will you be able to say, yes, I did everything that I could to end these mass deportations and attacks on immigrants when I served on the Pacifica City Council, and I stood with the immigrants? Thank you very much.
Blue Murrow, Denny Asness, and Dan Evenhouse.
Hi, I'm Blue Murrow from Pacific Manor neighborhood. I didn't prepare anything for tonight. I just came here to thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about something we're really passionate about, something very important. Every time I've done work over the last 50 years on social justice issues, I have never been sorry. I have never looked back and thought I did the wrong thing. I hope you will listen to everything that's been said tonight and in the past, and stay with your vote and make Pacifica sanctuary city. It's really important. We do not want to follow in the path that this country is trying to go in, and we want to show that we have the courage to stand up to the bullying and the fear mongering and all that that's going on right now. We just need to stand firm. Thank you.
Denny Asness, Dan Evenhouse, Christopher Corp.
Good evening. I just want to start by saying that it's been my honor during these last several proceedings to be able to speak on behalf of Pacifica youth and students. As a retired educator, as a retired public school teacher myself, and still an educator, I feel a special connection with the youth and students who have made their voices, their eloquent voices heard on this matter in supporting justice for immigrants. A few of us met with the Stay Woke Club at Oceana High School last Monday, and the members restated their commitment to Pacifica as a sanctuary city for all the reasons outlined in their following statement of support. They said, "Good evening, Pacifica City Council and assembled community. We are the Stay Woke Club from Oceana High, and we would like to make a statement regarding the upcoming vote on Pacifica's status as a sanctuary city. We claim to have come so far as a society, yet we find ourselves here today, voting on whether or not our peers have the right to live each and every day without the worry of being deported. Every person who walks down the halls of our school and the streets of our town has the right to feel safe and at home. Despite the fact that Pacifica is just a small town, we feel that the step towards being a sanctuary city is an important one. By definition, a sanctuary city is a city which does not permit police interactions with immigration control organizations such as ICE. Making Pacifica a sanctuary city will make the community safer for everyone who is undocumented. Sanctuary status limits the possibility of deportation, keeping families from being separated, and, as of recently, prevents the likelihood of children being sent back to a country they've hardly ever known. With the president's plan to repeal DACA, the fear of deportation is as high as ever. As citizens who have the ability to call the police and go to hospitals without fear of repercussions, it is our duty to grant those rights to everyone. Making Pacifica a sanctuary city is an important step for the whole nation. If a small town like ours is willing to make a change in the right direction, many others are sure to follow. While taking the steps towards being a sanctuary city is an important one, we believe that it is only the first step. The first step is never an easy one, but it is crucial that we come together at this time of turning points to make necessary changes that ultimately make our entire society safer. Thank you for considering the voices of us, the youth." And thank you.
Dan Evenhouse, Christopher Corp, Fred Howard.
Hello, my name's Dan Evenhouse. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight. I came a couple of weeks ago in support of sanctuary cities. I still am the ordinance. I am still in support of that. One of the main reasons that I came is I have two children, and I'm still concerned that they know that I've done everything I can to support them, and they're concerned for their friends. A few weeks after, or a few days after the school year started, my younger child, as I mentioned two weeks ago, came to me and said, you know, are my friends going to be deported? That's still a concern of his, and I want to make sure that I'm doing everything I can to alert and encourage the city council to make the right decision, to confirm the vote that was taken, and make Pacifica a sanctuary city. And I think that's something that will help not just my children, obviously, but all children who are in Pacifica. The schools have continued to support children regardless of documentation status. I think that this is a good thing for us to support our schools, our police, our residents of Pacifica, whoever they may be, and thank you again, and I encourage the city council to continue in this process.
Christopher Corp, Fred Howard, and Cynthia Gomez.
Hi, my name is Christopher Corp. I'm a student teacher at Oceana High School with some of the students that were, wrote that wonderful letter to you guys. Student teacher means that I'm at Oceana like two days a week, two wonderful days a week, then four nights a week I'm at University of San Francisco. And one of the things, when we talk about a lot of educational theory at University of San Francisco, and one of those things we always trying to think when we're coming up with lesson plan is what's the learning outcome? Where do we want our students to be at the end of the day, or at the end of the week, or the end of the unit? So, what I urge you, Pacifica City Council, to do here tonight, and I encourage you to make Pacifica sanctuary city, but I want you to think of the learning outcome for everybody here, and for Pacifica, and for your kids, my students, and I want you to think of what you're teaching them if you don't pass a city, sanctuary city ordinance. I want you to think that you're telling them that the bullies that we rid our schools of, those bullies have an effective method. That's what you're telling them. You're telling them that bullying works with the current administration cracking down on sanctuary cities and sanctuary states, and on top of that, you're also showing that you're telling people that we have a tiered or stratified version of who is a legitimate human being that deserves rights. I don't want my students to think that way. I want them to think of humanity as humanity, and I want you to as well, and I hope you will. The other thing is a little more practical. We have presentations at school. We have performances. We have all these great things. And as you know, Oceana, there's a lot of students who do not live in Pacifica, and I don't want the parents to have to think twice. Do I want to risk arrest and being turned over to ICE, or do I want to see my daughter's Doesn't that seem just ludicrous that that is a decision that people have to make? Well, let's take that off their plate. Let's make sure that doesn't have to happen. Let's make Pacifica sanctuary city. Thank you very much.
Hey, Fred Howard, Cynthia Gomez, Victoria Becker.
Thank you. I want to make this a personal thing. In 1961, I married my child, my high school sweetheart. I didn't know at that time, I knew she was from San Salvador, but I didn't know she hadn't had a green card. So, I kept insisting, honey, let's get the green card, let's get you become a citizen, and we can, you know, everything will be fine. Well, another 20 years went by, and she didn't get her green card, but we finally did all the paperwork. Now, this is a young lady that graduated in high school with honors, graduated from college on the dean's list and honors, has worked and paid her taxes, and if we had been in this situation, I probably would have lost her, and I know, known her and been married to her for 55 years. I don't want that to happen to anybody. But when I brought her papers down to the, to Battery Street, and for, to hit her, started on her citizenship papers, there were three couple of people, young kids, in front of me, and they were like two days late on their green card. One was three days late, and the guy behind the counter was screaming at them, "Can't do this." And I just, I'm shaking my head. I mean, I've been a citizen all my life, born here, and you can't do that to people. So, when I got up and I gave him my wife's papers, he flipped through and he says, "Oh, graduate of college, honor student, legal women voters, PTA." And I said, "Oh, wait a minute. Do you see a green card there?" "What do you mean?" I said, "She hasn't got a green card since she was six years old when she came here legally with the green card, but she never renewed it." Well, what happened after I said that, about three months or almost five months went by, and she wasn't called to become a citizen. Well, I called, had my attorney call, Lieutenant Governor under Ronald Reagan. He called, he says, "I'll call you back in five minutes." Called back and set up a thing for her to become a citizen. So, she could be facing something like this if this isn't a sanctuary city, but thank God, we did it and got it done. And I just want to say, please, vote yes, and California's already done it, so we just have to follow and do the same thing. Thank you.
Cynthia Gomez, Victoria Becker, Carolyn Darmelo.
Good evening, council. Cynthia Gomez, research analyst at Unite Here Local Two, and we represent members who live here in Pacifica and who also work here in Pacifica, as well as all San Mateo County. I won't belabor, and I won't repeat my points. I will be brief. The decision two weeks ago to declare Pacifica a sanctuary city was the right decision. It came after a lot of thought. It took a lot of courage to do, and it was the right decision. I understand that there's fear that the bully in the White House will take away some of the precious funds if you affirm this decision, but as many people have said, when the bully threatens to take away your But as many people have said, when the bully threatens to take away your lunch money if you don’t do whatever he says, you don’t acquiesce to that. All that does is teach the bully that you can be cowed. I applaud your courageous decision of two weeks ago, and I urge you to affirm it tonight. Thank you very much.
Victoria Becker, Carolyn Jarmelo, Suzanne Jonas.
Hi, I’m Tori Becker. I’ve been here now, this is the third time. I want to talk to you about racism and standing up to racism. This country was built on racism. First, it stole the indigenous people’s land, then it developed a whole slave trade, then during Reconstruction, it took away what, the winning against slavery, then, now here we are today with an administration that is amplifying racist ideas. It is time for each and every one of us to say that we are not going to do that. We’re going to act against racism. We are against racism. I have to do it, you each have to do it, the city of Pacifica has to do it, the county has to do it, the state has to do it. It has to be a movement that says we are not going to go forward without acting against racism. So to that end, you must, absolutely must, pass the sanctuary city ordinance.
Carolyn Jarmelo, Suzanne Jonas, Gloria Stofan.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Harmio. I’m a homeowner here in Pacifica, and I’m also a member of the Loretto community. And as such, I’ve been working with immigration issues for a number of years, about 10 or 12 years. Consequently, I get many emails from different immigrant-like groups, and they are elated that Governor Brown has signed SB 54, making California a sanctuary state. However, these groups are still advocating for cities to follow suit, and they do this for several reasons. One, to show that the community supports and appreciates undocumented immigrants living, working, and visiting in the community. By making it a sanctuary city, you offer them some measure of protection from ICE, a small measure, but it’s still very important to them. They want us to stand up to the punitive threats that are being used across the country to bully them and anyone who declares values different from the administration. Secondly, they want all cities to stand in solidarity throughout the state to send a message to the current administration that each community does not abide by this hypocritical policy of discrimination. A sanctuary city recognizes that undocumented immigrants serve and enrich us all in many ways, makes us possible for us to enjoy our low-cost food and wine, as well as many services. We all are a part of this system. Whether we want to admit it or not, we all enjoy the rights and the labor that these undocumented immigrants give to us. Now it’s our turn to give back to them. It’s only a matter of justice. And I’m proud that you took the vote last meeting to make Pacifica a sanctuary city, and I urge you to affirm that vote this evening. Thank you.
Suzanne Jonas, Gloria Stofan, Delia McGrath.
I’m Suzanne Jonas, and I want to talk about what’s going on right now this week. It’s no coincidence that, right now, with AB 54 having been signed, and movements all over the place to affirm and add sanctuary cities, that a lot of new threats have come down and retaliate, threats of retaliation. It was inevitable that this would happen, given the way that Trump administration works. And I’m here to ask you, as you did two weeks ago, to resist the logic of fear of those threats that are coming from the administration, the statements that are coming down from the head of ICE, Thomas Hohmanns, and Jeff Sessions, who is the Attorney General, and insinuations of funds being cut off, which are unconstitutional threats. They will not stand, they have not stood. City council members should, in a town like Pacifica, should know better than to go along with these statements, and therefore, which do nothing but cause family separations, and, you know, really cause trouble for kids. Pacifica values need to be upheld right now, now, this week, more than ever. Thank you very much.
Gloria Stofan, Delia McGrath, Thursday Roberts.
Good evening, city council members. Gloria Stofan, Pacifica resident. As a child of immigrant parents from Central America, I feel very strongly that the city council vote that Pacifica become a sanctuary city to include all immigrants in a compassionate city of Pacifica, supporting justice in our dear city of Pacifica. As I stated before, a couple of weeks ago, Pacifica became, becomes a place of refuge or safety. Thus, Pacifica stands in solidarity together with other cities in the Bay Area. Thank you.
Delia McGrath, Thursday Roberts.
I came this evening thinking that it would be a glorious moment when the second reading would happen and the sanctuary city would go through, so I did not prepare any particular statement. I’m coming from the heart, that’s the best place to come from. This is such an important issue for us, and you have the opportunity, the golden opportunity, to affirm your vote of two weeks ago when you knew it was the right thing to do. Now do it again. Go for it. Don’t be fearful. You’ve heard many speakers this evening giving beautiful commentaries on this issue, and I think that it’s just the right thing to do. I would be remiss to have remained silent even though I did not have a prepared commentary. So again, I thank you for your yes vote, confirming this golden opportunity to support our community and those who are vulnerable. Thank you.
Thursday Roberts, and Thursday’s is the last card I have in this item, so if anybody else wishes to speak, I need your card.
Good evening. I don’t have any comments prepared either. We didn’t, I don’t think I was expecting that we’d have an opportunity to talk about this. I have not been so proud to be a citizen of the state of California as I am now. I’m thrilled that the governor and the legislature has determined that the state of California will be a sanctuary state. I’m thrilled that the people in Sacramento are suing the government when they are trying to put forth unconstitutional actions. I’m proud to be a Californian because we’re sticking up for ourselves and we’re doing what’s right, and like everyone knows, we sort of lead the way in the country. Since the state passed sanctuary city, it’s kind of a no-brainer, isn’t it? I mean, we’re a compassionate city. Isn’t that what we are saying we are? I mean, please vote in favor of it.
Okay, I just got a bunch more cards. So Valerie Lappin, Art Sato, and Ellen Haig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Valerie Lappin. I’m a 20-year resident of Pacifica. I vote in every election. I’m very active in political campaigns, and I never miss a vote. Two weeks ago, I was very proud of this body. You took a stand of conscience, you looked into your, the majority of you looked into your hearts. You did the right thing. You did the right thing by our community, you did the right thing by our local economy. Frankly, I was surprised that it wasn’t a unanimous vote, because this is so obviously in the interest of our community to make it a sanctuary community. Unfortunately, we have a bully in the White House, and sadly, it seems as though that bully has had some influence on this body. When I was a kid, and there was a bully on the playground, the grown-ups said, “Stand up to him, because if you don’t, they’ll just keep pushing and pushing.” And this is a perfect example of it. I’ve done a considerable amount of study of hate groups and hate crimes, and they start with small acts, like leaflets, putting leaflets on cars that are KKK flyers or what have you. It’s kind of cowardly because they do it in hiding, but when they get away with it, it starts to escalate, and they get emboldened. And unfortunately, the end result ends up in murder, and we’ve seen that this is happening in our country right now. So now’s the time for us to stand up, stand up to these bullies. Many of us here are not immigrants, so you may think that we’re not directly impacted by this, and it doesn’t affect our community, but a lot of us are under attack nonetheless. So if we throw the immigrants by the wayside, they’re already coming after a lot of us who are identified as other groups. So I take this very personally, even though I was born here, and I vote, and I never miss an election. So please do the right thing. The state of California has, and we must in Pacifica do the same thing as well. Thank you.
Art Sato, and then Ellen Haig.
It’s Sato.
Sorry.
And this is my third consecutive meeting here at city council. Been a Pacifica resident for 17 years, but hadn’t really attended meetings until these last three meetings because of the urgency of this particular topic and the way it hits me personally. Many of you know my story already, some may not, but I was born behind barbed wire, an American citizen. My parents and grandparents were dragged off to these concentration camps because of a racist hysteria that was whipped up by mainly California politicians and their friends in the media, most prominently the Hearst Corporation. And I see a lot of parallels of what’s happening today. And I pointed out, well, actually, the Pacifica Tribune actually printed some parts of the last meeting and misquoted me. It said that I was born in a Japanese internment camp. And I made this correction before at the last meeting, it wasn’t a Japanese internment camp, it was an American concentration camp for, for Japanese Americans. It was not a Japanese camp. It was an American camp. Pacifica, as I mentioned before, was complicit in this. It was a detention center before Japanese Americans were shipped off to the permanent camps. And I mentioned that walking, you walk down to Moray Point on this path, and you’ll actually see a landmark sign there. And I actually, after the last meeting, I visited that sign just to make sure that I had really seen it, and I took a photograph of it. And yes, in 1942, Japanese Americans were held here in Pacifica, in Sharp Park. And also, if you go and look at that sign, there’s also some Italian and German nationals as well. And it was because this atmosphere that existed at that time, the racist hysteria, the xenophobia, which is being whipped up now. So I think we have to stand up, like many of the previous speakers said, the importance of standing up to bullying and threats. So please, vote yes and sanctuary.
Ellen Haig. And Ellen is the last card I have in this item.
Good evening. Ellen Haig, Pacifica resident. During the past two weeks since the last city council meeting, I reached out to two people, members of our community, who were born in other countries. I wonder how many Pacificans have actually had a conversation with someone who has immigrated here, someone who may not be a citizen, and asked them what that experience is like, if they feel welcome, if they feel safe, what their hopes and dreams are for themselves and for their family. I had the pleasure of speaking with two such people who came to this country seeking a better life. Both of them are wonderful, kind, very hard-working people who contribute to our community. One person, who I’ve known for many years, came to this country in the 1980s, seeking political asylum from the death squads in Guatemala. The many hardships and the trauma he experienced is a testimony to his courage that I so admire. He has raised two wonderful daughters, college graduates. His family is an American family, an immigrant family who came to the United States, as did almost all of our families. Both persons told me the same thing, with a smile and expression of hope on their face. They said they would be so happy if Pacifica becomes a sanctuary city. People they know will be able to feel safe and not live in fear. Please, vote yes tonight to make Pacifica a sanctuary city where immigrants can feel safe. Thank you.
Okay, I have no other cards for this item, so I close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Any comments? Sue Vernerlles?
I am thankful that the state decided to pass this bill. But what I heard tonight, we may not lose funding. It’s not likely. We’ll have to file a lawsuit. I still owe my fiduciary duty to the citizens and the city of Pacifica to not lose our funding. I am afraid, I’m bullied. We are a compassionate city, we are a sanctuary city. I don’t think we need to name us that. What happened last Friday, they sent ICE into Santa Clara County and San Francisco. Why? Because they’re sanctuary cities, and they removed 34 immigrants because they’re sanctuary cities. Do we want that to happen? We don’t participate with ICE now. Why can’t we be a compassionate city? Why do we have to draw attention to ourselves and put the name on it? So I will again be voting no.
Any other comments? John?
I’ll make a motion if...
To agree?
Everybody’s ready for it.
Yes, I understand the fiduciary, and I’m concerned about that, obviously, and also, having worked with children, and they are affected in their entire being and in their entire life, from a sense of whether their community or not is receptive and open to protect them. And regarding the stand-up to bullying, that touches a chord as well. There could be leadership in this country, and there was leadership in past history, where people in power presumed, assumed that they had the right vision, and therefore could clamp down on everybody. I often ask myself, if I lived in Nazi Germany at the time, would I have picked up on that in time to do something positive? So from those perspectives, I see the vote for sanctuary city as both compassionate and fiduciary at the same time.
Okay, everybody knows how I voted last time. My basic reasons are still the same, is that I am concerned about when you get a phone call from the Congresswoman’s staff saying that they do not think this is the best interest of Pacifica. And frankly, I, you know, if it does go to court, we do not have the resources to fight the court case, nor do we have the resources to maintain any of the programs, nor do we have the resources to fix the seawall and other infrastructure things that need to be repaired in Pacifica. So I will, and I don’t see any reason why we need to poke the bear. Is he a bully? Yes. Do I support what he wants to do? No. But I just don’t feel, I just feel what’s better for Pacifica is to try to get what funds we need to do the social services and the infrastructure repairs we have. So that’s why I will be voting no. John?
I’d like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance adapting, adding Chapter 16 to Title IV of the Pacifica... the Pacifica Municipal Code to make Pacifica a sanctuary city.
I'll second.
And that motion passes three to two. Next, next item on the agenda is oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided however that during the oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of two minutes will be allowed due to the number of cards we have. Will be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 1, Section 2-1.118. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council, shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may at the direction of the presiding officer be ordered barred from further audience before the council during the meeting. Now, I also ask everybody to please respect everybody's opinion at the podium, whether you agree or disagree. You do not have the right to yell at them, boo them, or even clap for them, okay? I will stop the meeting and if it can, and call it to order. If it continues, I will ask the chief of police to escort the individual or individuals out of the building, okay? It's perfectly within the right. And so you just, you know, the city just voted to be a sanctuary city. This is a sanctuary where everybody is entitled to their opinion and everybody can state it and shall not be bullied by anybody in the audience, okay? So calling up the cards. And I remind everybody, you have two minutes. Kathy Maresco, Thursday Roberts, Robert Fontes.
Hi, my name is Kathy Maresco. And first, I want to thank Mayor O'Neill for his courage in speaking out against Measure C. He has lent his name and his image to the no on Measure C information piece. And Mayor, Mayor O'Neill says, "Make no mistake, if the fee is mandatory, then it is a tax. Plus, there is no method of collection. Our city council needs to be focused on other priorities right now, like fixing our streets, not creating a huge new department that has direct access to the general fund and who is not accountable to taxpayers or city council. I am strongly against Measure C and would encourage all Pacifica residents to vote no on Measure C." I attended the Fair Rents meeting last Thursday at the Little Brown Church. Councilmember Keener, you were highlighted in the discussion of the ordinance, and you said quite adamantly that the $19 per unit per month would fully fund the ordinance and would not affect the general fund, when you know that's not true. The ordinance says that the city will advance the funds. Those funds don't come out of nowhere. And I'd like to know where you think the funds are going to come from, if not out of the general fund. So I don't understand why you intentionally continue to mislead your own constituency. I don't know what your motive is behind this measure. I don't know who you're really working for or who you answer to. But I think that you need to have the courage to tell the truth, as Mayor O'Neill and Sue Vatterlofs has. Thank you.
Thursday Roberts, Robert Fontes, Tiger Big Stick.
Need to speak fast. I suppose I'm naive. I was raised to value truthfulness and communications, and really, I thought this was a value shared by all reasonable people. The no new tax message being plastered all over town by the no on C campaign clearly wants people to believe that there is a tax associated with Measure C. There is not. The idea that Measure C will bankrupt the city is also completely inaccurate. I'm confused because all of the council members were quite involved in the development of the ordinance and four of the five voted to put it on the ballot. The cost of the program will be paid for by apartments. If the fee needs to be adjusted, it will be by the city council. No general fund monies are being spent on the ordinance. The claim that our roads will not be fixed because of the ordinance is untrue. It's so discouraging that our public officials, who are very informed about the ordinance, are promoting these untruths, along with several other statements that are equally untrue. How are people in Pacifica supposed to respect our city government when self-interest drives council members to deceive the public? We probably all agree that having different opinions is a given in our society, and thankfully so. Our democratic system allows voters to express their opinion, but when leaders flagrantly misrepresent the truth, it demoralizes not just them, but the entire city. I'm so sorry to see this. It's clear that the real estate lobby is driving the no on C campaign, and to date, almost $300,000 of out-of-town real estate money has been contributed to the no on C campaign. Please, everyone read the ordinance. The facts are in black and white and are not open to interpretation in the real world. The measure is solid as written with no wiggle room or gray areas of unclarity. Please vote yes on Measure C to provide some stability to renters in Pacifica, just as homeowners enjoy stability thanks to Prop 13. And can we please get the facts on the city website to state that Measure C is not a tax? Thank you.
Robert Fontes, Tiger Big Stick, Gloria Stofan. Okay, Gloria, Tiger Big Stick, Stif, Gloria Stofan, then Janet Briger.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jastrow's Big Stick of Pacifica. Going back to what Mike was saying about bullies earlier, a couple weeks ago, while we were discussing sanctuary city, an older lady got up to raise her opinion of dissent, and what I heard was a lot of booing and hissing. And I just wanted to suggest that in a room filled with people whom are all more or less in agreement, when one person has the courage to stand up in that setting, and I think it is courageous to stand up in front of a lot of people who disagree with you, it is incredibly inappropriate and rude to start booing her and hissing at her. There's only two options here. Either you learn how strong your argument is by hearing somebody whose argument is not as strong as yours, or you get to add to your perspective, maybe something you hadn't heard before, and maybe adjust your own opinion accordingly. But there is no need for that kind of rudeness, in my opinion. Over the course of the last week, week and a half, we've seen a lot of tragedy, both on the national scale and a local scale regarding gun violence. And while I'm not of the mind there is much we can do on the local level, I wanted to just suggest that maybe it would be pertinent to do a gun buyback program through the Pacifica Police Department. Not that that's going to, you know, so that if somebody wants the opportunity to get a gun out of their house to maybe reduce their chances of there being an accident, they have that opportunity. So that if somebody wants that opportunity for a little more peace of mind in this moment where maybe it's weighing heavily on them, just we're giving that opportunity. And after that, we're talking a lot about writing letters nationally lately. Maybe a letter supporting something that pretty much all Americans support, which is disallowing people on a terrorist watch list to buy a gun would be a good idea. It should be representative of all of us. Thank you.
Gloria Stofan, Janet Briger, Dahlia Grabowski.
Good evening, city council members. My name's Gloria Stofan, resident and homeowner in Pacifica since 1966, and a member of Pacifica's Faith in Action. I'm here to take this opportunity to address certain housing issues that need to be repeated and stated again and again. Number one, as a former Park Beach and Recreation Commissioner, I can assure you that I was not an employee of the city or the Park Beach and Rec Department. I did not receive a salary or benefits. I was appointed to the commission by the city council and volunteered by time to work with other commissioners in regard to the city's needs. No city commissioners are compensated. Please remember and hear this. We are not compensated. There will be a single hearing officer who will be contracted to work with the rental board commission. Also, the rental board will only be triggered to meet by a tenant or apartment owner complaint when it's filed. And this measure is not a new tax. It will not bankrupt the city. The cost of implementing Measure C will be covered by the fee on only apartment rentals built prior to 1995, not single-family homes, townhouses, mother-in-law units, condos, or complexes. Costa-Hawkins Act is a state enacted act in 1995, and is a, and is, the only way to change this exemption is in our city of Pacifica measure. It will have to go to ballot and the voters will vote on it. Thank you.
Janet Briger, Dahlia Grabowski, Barbara Byrom.
So I'm assuming the other two are no show. Sorry about that.
No, no problem.
Yeah, hi. So my name is Barbara Byrom. I've been a resident of Pacifica for 20 years. I'm a leader in a faith community, and I strongly believe that, I guess you could call it enlightened self-interest, that what's best for me is that everyone in Pacifica have their needs served as much as possible. So I am here to address Measure C. I, I don't believe I can name the person on the council who sent me an email, but you know who you are. And it was very long, and I very much appreciate the time and effort that was put into it. And you invited me to ask questions as a follow-up, which I will do, and I will do that now. Only I can't, obviously, I have only two or three minutes, two minutes, and I can't receive any answers, so it's my intention to follow up these questions, to direct them to you and to request a written response. On page 19 of the ballot under Argument Against Measure C, it says, "Economic experts project the measure will really cost $2 million to defend." What are the name of these experts? How did they arrive at $2 million? Was this number in reference to Pacifica as implied by the argument? Did they write a report or cost analysis, or is this just word of mouth? I was told in the email that the city general fund will have to pay salaries and costs of setting up regulations by advancing the money. Is it not the case the severed member commission, who will be setting the regulations, will receive no salaries because they work pro bono? You mentioned that SAMCAR, S-A-M-C-A-R, has a legal opinion that Measure C is a tax, and it appears that's where this idea came from. SAMCAR is a Realtors Association, and we know that the Realtors Association have had a massive input of money to oppose Measure C. So it seems to me that if an opinion, this is a tax, that it's biased. And so do you have another, I hear the bill.
Barbara.
And I will quit in one moment. Yeah, I hear that. I just think that finally, in the interest of transparency and integrity, that on the council website, it has stated the source of this $2 million number because it's scaring people, and also the source of the, that is an opinion from a legal fund.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Is it tax?
Thank you.
Is it opinion, not a tax?
Thank you. Dahlia Grabowski, Fred Howard, and Suzanne Moore. And just one moment, I just wanted to be sure everybody knows that if we are asked a question at the podium, this is not an agendized item, so therefore, we cannot answer the question. So go ahead, Dahlia. Thank you.
In the news, I saw that a bill was passed by the California Legislature to make all licenses provisional until '21, all driver's licenses. This bill only needs Governor Jerry Brown's signature to pass and be...
Post it to the microphone, please. Sorry.
Okay. This bill only needs the governor's signature to become a law. I'm furious this bill even made it this far. If it passes, this will only affect people who couldn't vote to put these people in office and won't be able to vote on this policy. How is this reasonable? This will go, if it passes, it will go into effect in 2020. At that time, I will be 19. I could get married. I could get a credit card and go thousands of dollars into debt. I can enlist in the military and get my face tattooed. But I won't be able to drive my little sister to church, or be a designated driver for my older friends, or make a trip to Safeway after 11:00 PM. Also, it's my understanding that provisional licenses, people have to pay more for insurance. This is an economic strain. I also understand that what I'm talking about is at a state level and we are only local. However, I've chosen to bring this up so that a group of people who can vote, people who do have a say, can hear what I have to say. I can't vote, but that doesn't mean I won't be heard. That's all.
We can't make any comments, so. Thank you, Dahlia. Fred Howard, Suzanne Moore, Delia McGrath.
Fred Howard, before I make my statements, I want you to know that I've known a Realtor for over 50 years. His dad helped me buy my first house. So I'm not against Realtors. But I find it quite, that the ad you sent out had four Realtors, three Realtors on it, and they said that they were the leaders of this community. I'll tell you who the leaders of this community is, and that's the three people that are voting yes on that council. And Mayor, you're not a leader. They appointed you. You didn't get elected. They were appointed you the mayor, not elected the mayor. And you're supposed to represent the council. And that's not a very good job you're doing. But let me say this. No people that work on any committees get paid. No one that, they don't have the authority to negotiate money with anybody. But just make sure that we get the information on the website that's true. And one is, it doesn't cause taxes. It's not, it doesn't do anything about doing the streets. That's through Pop A and the state, and maybe the federal. But that doesn't, you're gonna do that, you gotta get the money from everybody else. It doesn't come from all of the taxpayers here. It's what we pay gas for, the taxes on gas. So don't make that story that the streets are gonna go bad because of this issue. Just be honest with the people. I, I've only, I haven't walked my dog in eight months. I was able to walk him this last week and the week before. And I had people come out and say, "Oh, Fred, it's great. It's nice to see Teddy." And then they ask me a question about Prop C. And I tell them, they say, "Well, they're saying there's gonna be taxes." There's not gonna be taxes on you. Thank you.
Suzanne Moore, Delia McGrath, Roy Stotts.
Good evening. Suzanne Moore from the Fair Rents Committee. I recently heard that Fair Rents Steering Committee is a lot of unrealistic older ladies who like kittens and butterflies. I happen to know that many of the men and women on the committee do like kittens and butterflies. But the Steering Committee is also teachers, social workers, nurses, and public servants who have worked in the community and have seen the suffering, the very real suffering of the housing crisis. Fair Rents for Pacifica has a different vision from our opponents. Unlike our opponents, who seem to believe that the economic proposition of supply and demand is as concrete as Newton's Law of Gravity, we believe in the power of choice to promote community well-being. We don't have to accept the fear-mongering and misinformation paid by our outside lobbyists, lobbyists who have donated over $275,000 so far to defeat Measure C to their financial advantage. Measure C is not a tax, and we would like to request our city attorney to define fee and put that information in our, at our city facts and clarify it is not a tax. Measure C will not cost $2 million. Measure C will not draw from the general fund and divert services, and Measure C will not bankrupt the city. Measure C will protect about 2,200 rental units from sudden and dramatic rent increases. Pacifica's rents have increased 122% since 2010. Measure C will protect these tenants from eviction without cause, and in our county, that's gone up 308%, with 70% of those evicted families with children. Measure C will slow displacement of our caregivers, teachers, nurses, bank tellers, store clerks, families, children, the disabled, and those on fixed income. Please join us, join our vision, and vote yes on Measure C.
Delia McGrath, Roy Stotts, and Lorraine Bannister, or Banner. I'm sorry, I can't quite make it out. I'm sorry, I can't quite make it out.
Good evening. My name is Delia McGrath, a Pacifica resident since 1978. I invite all Pacifica voters to vote yes on C on November 7th and to put in place this excellent new city ordinance. Our yes-on-C votes will support the benefits of sanity and fairness for thousands of renters and families who will be covered by the passage of Measure C. Our yes votes on Measure C indicate our intelligence, our compassion, and our deep caring for members of our community. We yes-on-C voters will honorably check yes on our ballots to protect renters and stabilize our community. We cry out against the displacement and no-fault evictions of families, persons with disabilities, elders, and longtime renters in Pacifica. We yes-on-C voters know how devious the statements and images from the other side have been to date. Yet we are fearless to stand up publicly to expose the fact that $300,000-plus as of October 5th have been thrown at Pacifica to defeat Measure C. 90% of which has come from out-of-town real estate interests, the deep-pocket self-interests of an industry that is trying to scare us with false claims, an industry that is trying to buy out our town. We are not deceived by the odious falsehoods of the opposition. We yes-on-C voters have actually read the ordinance printed in the sample ballot to verify for ourselves what is in the ordinance. We urge all voters to do the same, and we appreciate your yes-on-C vote. Thank you.
Roy Stotts, Lorraine Bannister, Carolyn Jaramello.
First, I'd like to thank Mayor O'Neill and Councilwoman Vatterlos for staying strong against the vicious attacks that have been made upon you during the last... over the last couple of months. Totally uncalled for. Second, for those of you who are interested, I have a copy of the $2.5 million Mountain View rental ordinance, which is very similar to ours. Two and a half million. One of the people on this rental council in Mountain View is also a professor, economics professor at San Jose State University. And he says that it's gonna cost between a million and a half and $2 million here in Pacifica. You don't have to like the numbers, but they're real. Third thing, Councilwoman Digg... I'm ashamed to admit I voted for you, but I promise you, I will not make that mistake again. And I also distress that Councilwoman Keener continues to lie about how easily this measure can be... Cannot be changed. The fact is, it can be changed very easily. There's 22 places in it where it says it can. And if you've really read it, you'll know this. And also, what the actual cost is. Because the actual cost is gonna be closer to $2 million than it is to a half a million. And Pacifica residents will end up picking up the difference. Finally, to the gang of three that placed this poorly-written and very divisive measure on the ballot, please take note that I promise that from now on, I will vigorously campaign for anyone that runs against you.
Lorraine Bannister, Carolyn Jaramello, Tom Thompson.
Good evening, City Council. Lorraine Bannister, Pacifica resident and proud voter. On many levels, I'm absolutely flabbergasted at the way that's gone back and forth with Measure C. However, I'm here to just state unrevocably that Mr. Keener... I'm sorry, Mr. Keener. You've been going around town telling anyone who will listen that any changes to Measure C would require a vote of the people. But on the other hand, you have no problem saying that the city council can just raise the fee if it's not enough. You're taking out of... Talking out of both sides of your mouth. Which is it? Additionally, since this is an ordinance that is... That the council placed on the ballot, it does not have the same voter protections as a citizen-fired initiative. This ordinance... I'm sorry, forgive me. Should it pass, does not require voter approval for future changes. So this has to be stated. This cannot... You can't go around telling people that changes can't be made without voter approval. They indeed can be made without voter approval, and I believe you know that to be the case. So please, check with any election attorney and not-tenant attorney from East Palo Alto, and they'll be glad to set you straight. Thank you for listening.
Carolyn Jaramello, Tom Thompson, and Lori Goldberg.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Harameel, homeowner here in Pacifica. At the recent education forum sponsored by the Campaign for Measure C, several people told us that we needed to keep saying that Measure C would not create a tax or a new city department. So I will take that opportunity tonight to say just that. Measure C will not create a new tax. Measure C will be paid for by a fee on apartments. Apartment owners may pass that fee on to renters. Measure C does not create a city department. It sets up a Severed Member Commission. Members of that commission are volunteers and will not be paid. The city attorney and city staff analyzed the proposed ordinance and submitted their report to the city council on May 8th. Nowhere in their report does it state that Measure C will create a tax or a city department. Nowhere in that report does it state that Measure C will bankrupt the city. Nowhere does it say that the police department nor the fire department budgets will be jeopardized by Measure C. The report does state that the cost of implementing Measure C will be covered by a fee on apartment rentals. Therefore, tonight, I would like to ask both the city attorney and the staff to publicly rescind their report if they feel it is not accurate or true. Measure C will protect approximately 2,200 apartment units, which means approximately 5,000 Pacificans. I'm taking advantage of that opportunity to vote yes, to be able to help 5,000 people with a single vote. I think that's terrific, and I urge all members of the City of Pacifica to vote yes on Measure C.
Tom Thompson, Lori Goldberg, Ellen Haig.
I'm starting to be concerned for Pacifica, that the actions of some members of our city council sometimes, remember, resemble The Three Stooges. One can't figure out how to register to vote or file candidacy papers properly. Another used underhanded campaign tricks through her minions to oust a beloved incumbent in order to gain office. A third, John Keener, is behind every bad idea in Pacifica, promoting managed retreat, letting parts of Pacifica fall into the ocean, killing a new library, returning over $5 million of funding so Hillsborough can repave their streets. These same three council members, DeGree, Martin, and Keener, put their face on a mail lying to Pacifica. Strong words, I know. But there's no way that Measure C will not impact our general fund, and they know it. Municipal experts say the $500,000 new tax on renters won't cover the roughly $2 million experts say will... It'll really cost. However, in conclusion, thank heavens, though, for Mike O'Neill and Sue Vetterlos. They have the integrity and political courage to tell the truth. They've been clear Measure C is really bad public policy that will create an expensive new city department we just can't afford. More proof today, by the way, Mountain View released their $2.5 million budget for a nearly identical five-member rent eviction relocation controls board like Measure C. But thanks to Mike O'Neill and Sue Vetterlos, at least some people are telling the truth. We need more honest leaders like Mr. O'Neill and Ms. Vatterlos. Thank you.
Lori Goldberg, Ellen Haig, Lynn Adams.
Thank you, John Keener, for having your convictions and standing by them. We're talking about sanctuary city. We need a sanctuary for our renters, for all people of Pacifica. I know renters who cry because they're portrayed as, "Oh, they're awful, and they're drug people." Well, some of these people up here on city council, they have rental properties. Do they... And they're saying this also. Now, do they rent to drug owners and convicted criminals? I mean, this is just ridiculous. Teachers want to stay here. They can't, because they can't afford the rent. I've talked to people who want to live here in Pacifica. They can't afford the rent. I talked to women in Mountain View. Thank goodness, Mountain View people are smart. They defeated SAMCARs. They defeated millions of dollars, billions of dollars. They're talking about our roads needing to be paved with these big "No on Sea" signs and all this money they're putting in. That could be paving our roads and fixing our city, instead of telling lies that it's gonna be a tax and it's gonna cost millions of dollars. I would love to see everyone being able to live here. I've had a lot of friends that had to move out. I talked to women in Mountain View. Because their Mountain View rent control passed, her and her husband and her two kids can stay there. If it hadn't been for that, and she told me all these lies and all this misinformation that's coming out in Pacifica, it's not happening in Mountain View. I think Sue Vatterlos, Mike O'Neill, and maybe everyone on city council needs to talk to the people in Mountain View who passed the rent control, defeated Goliath... David defeated Goliath there. Pacificans, we can do that also. We've done it before. We've done it with developers. We can do it with SAMCARs, the real estate greed. And I want to read from the pink section. Joe Goodput, "How do we determine who gets what? Am I entitled because I have been terribly successful? Because I can buy the land and kick out the rent who live there? It's simply a case of free and economics, and we're in a sad state of affairs." Thank you.
Ellen Haig, Lynn Adams, Susan Getchell-Wallace.
Good evening, Ellen Haig, Pacifica resident and homeowner since 1974, member of Faith in Action. Measure C will protect renters from exorbitant rent increases and provide stability for themselves and their families, so they do not have to live in fear that they will be priced out of their home and their community. Yesterday, I knocked on the door of a young woman who rents a dumpy apartment in Pacifica. She told me she is a single mom with two young children, doing her best to keep a roof over her head. Earlier this year, she received a rent increase of $750 a month. She had to get another job to pay her rent. So now this young mother has two jobs to pay her rent and two children to care for and support on her own since her mother died last year. I haven't mentioned, as we spoke, her household was on meltdown. I can only imagine the stress and anxiety and fear they are feeling. It feels like we're in the middle of a Dickensian novel. Some people I have spoken with don't even seem to care very much, or they say they're sorry in one breath, and in the next, complain about their taxes going up. I am hoping the goodwill and intelligence of Pacificans will prevail when they vote in November. Measure C does not create a new tax. Measure C will be paid for by the renters. Please, post this fact. Measure C does not create a new tax on the city website and end the misinformation and confusion among the residents of Pacifica. Many of us are parents or grandparents. Can we look at the big picture? What kind of a community are we leaving to our children and grandchildren if they cannot afford a roof over their head to rent, let alone save for their future? Our generation had opportunities to buy a home that was affordable. Now it seems even affordable rent is out of reach for the young people of Pacifica. Please, yes on Measure C. Thank you.
Lynn Adams, Susan Getchell-Wallace, Kimberly Claussen.
Hello, council. I just want to give you a break from Measure C for a second. Okay? Because it's like really... But I want to say that I am really, really proud to be a Pacifican, to hear people speak up for other people, not themselves. I'm really proud of the sanctuary cities. I appreciate that all these people speak up for other people, and that the City of Pacifica will stand by everyone. I also am very proud to say that the City of Pacifica also stands by its environment. Noticed after the third quarter of the year, not all data is collected, but we have already exceeded 10,600 volunteers for the year, providing between 20,000 and 30,000 volunteer hours for our beaches and our habitat, and our streets and our public spaces. Together, these 10,000 volunteers have removed over nine tons of trash, two tons of recycling, 21 tons of weeds from Valley Mar Creek, Lindemar Beach, and Rockaway Switchbacks, mostly. We've also created gardens. We've created habitat, better habitat. And we've inspired a new and empowered generation of environmentalists who help the environment, that improve their own mental health. They build community, and they have become new earth heroes. So I'm really proud of that. I'd want to invite anybody in the community who would like to be a part of this team to join the Pacifica Beach Coalition. We need leaders to keep these volunteers going. There's so much we can do when we all work together. So if you'd like to be a leader with the Pacifica Beach Coalition, or even just a member and be an assistant, we have so many opportunities. I also am really happy to announce... That's it.
Hey, Susan Getchell-Wallace, Kimberly Claussen, and Bridget Duffy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor O'Neill and council. I'm here this evening first to thank Mayor O'Neill and Councilmember Vatterlos for their courage in campaigning against Measure C. If passed, this proposed San Francisco-style rent control ordinance will negatively impact all members of our community. Please, all citizens of Pacifica, read this ordinance. It is posted on the City of Pacifica website. Proponents state that this ordinance will only apply to apartment buildings with three or more units and does not apply to single-family homes, condos, in-laws, duplexes, or townhouses. As now written, this is true. But if this passes, council will be able to apply the just cause eviction and mandatory relocation provisions of the ordinance to single-family properties with a simple majority vote at council. State law, referred to as Costa-Hawkins, does not protect single-family residences from just cause eviction and mandatory relocation payments. The two most onerous provisions of this ordinance. At a recent debate, Councilmember Keener stated that in order to modify the ordinance and add single-family properties, it would have to go back to the community for a vote. Simply put, this statement is not true. It would be if the citizens of Pacifica placed this measure on the ballot through the initiative process. But citizens of Pacifica did not create this measure. Council directed our city attorney to work with a specific nonprofit renters' rights attorney to create this ordinance. Because our council placed Measure C on the ballot, if passed, council can modify the ordinance at any time with a simple majority vote. I have no doubt that the three members of council supporting this ordinance will add just cause eviction and mandatory relocation provisions to single-family residences as soon as they possibly can. Any Pacifica property owner who currently rents out a room or a portion of their home or has an in-law unit should be concerned. Please read this ordinance. I have and now know that even my death would not be a just cause to remove a tenant from my home. Please vote no on Measure C. This is not the vehicle to help.
Please, no clapping, please. Kimberly Claussen, Bridget Duffy, Michelle McIntee.
Good evening, council people. My name is Kimberly Claussen. I am a property owner. I used to be a renter here in Pacifica back in 2001, before I purchased my home. The rent was high even at that time, but I purchased a home. I read this ordinance, and I am concerned because just in this proposal from just tonight, there's repealing and amending of current actions. So, that being said, I don't think people know that are no on Measure C are not compassionate about the people of Pacifica, but we need to be concerned of all people of Pacifica, not just the renters, but the property owners. And plus, I don't think Measure C even protects the renters, because it increases the rent yearly. So for people who are saying that they're concerned... Sorry. Concerned about the rent being increased, it's gonna be increased with Measure C. The funds... Also, I had some questions. It says, "How much has the city spent on endorsing Measure C?" Because it actually states in the measure that they're getting the funds. If the fee is collected from the measure, is it supposed to reimburse the city? If there is an excess, where does that money go? There's no... Like, where does the money... There's no, like, where does the money, and everyone's like going, okay, they're collecting to promote this measure, but there's no accountability for the funds. So, if there's no accountability, we don't know where the funds are going, and it just feels like there's not accountability in this measure. If there's not enough, they're going to be, sorry, thank you.
Kimberly, thank you. Bridget Duffy, Michelle MacIntyre, Chaya Gordon.
Hi, Bridget Duffy. Man, what an emotionally charged, okay, for one thing, I wanted, I wanted to just say one thing. The tall, venomous man who was up here earlier, very, very, very clearly opposed to any kind of rent stabilization. I only went to one of the Rent Force Task Force meetings, but that man was sitting at the head. He seemed to be telling everybody what to think, when one of the citizens asked, "What about these tiny house communities?" He put the kibosh on it immediately. Now, I don't know why he had so much power on the task force, but I can tell you this, this is why the task force did not accomplish any kind of stability for our community. Measure C does, and I hope that everybody votes yes on Measure C. There's a big part of it in my newsletter. You can find my newsletter, if you're lucky, it's the Salata Cafe. I give it to the council, it's around town. If you get it, and you get it, you should give it away. Anyway, remarkably, I also have those books I promised you, number three. And the funny thing about this story is that it's exactly what's been happening to me with this council and the rent control issue. And the other thing I'd like to say is, I cannot believe that by consensus, you guys at one point agreed to make rent stabilization the number one priority of Pacifica. I witnessed that myself. But now, two of our council members are seen on "No On C" pamphlets. Now, I'm not sure if you guys didn't understand what you were agreeing to when you agreed to a consensus, but you did agree to a consensus. So, how does that fit in legally? I would like the attorney to look into it.
Michelle MacIntyre, Chaya Gordon, Denny Aznis.
Hello, my name is Michelle MacIntyre. I'm a Pacifica homeowner. I'm voting no on Measure C. The real problem is affordable housing, and if rent control solved that problem, then San Francisco would be a very cheap place to live. I don't believe that the $19 a month fee will be enough to cover this new, unneeded bureaucracy. I fear our general funds will be diverted and wasted on Measure C and not help the housing crisis, one bet. No on C. Thank you.
Chaya Gordon, Denny Aznis, Frank Vella.
Good evening again, Chaya Gordon. Fair rents for Pacifica. I don't think I need to tell any of you that Pacifica is predominantly made up of homeowners, the renters are, I'm not sure, 20%, that might not be quite right. I think that things probably worked for many decades here, not too badly, but what's going on with the economy now has changed everything, and there is a housing crisis for renters. So I've been looking at the ads for Measure C and against Measure C, and there are some very interesting things that have emerged from analyzing those ads. The "No On C" ads are full of things that I could politely call untruths or distortion of truths, and I find it shocking, and I believe that it's very likely that the two council members who are prominently in those ads are in violation of the Fair Political Practices Committee policies, and that is something that someone should look into. I'd also like to comment that if you have a real estate license and don't know that the number of renters is set by a lease, we have bigger problems than, you know, than are being talked about. It is absolutely not true that you could have 16 people in an apartment unless the lease said that. And I know that, because I've studied the funding, that these ads are being funded by out-of-town Realtor groups, Sam Car and the National Association of Realtors, and that is a very unlevel playing field. They have deep, deep pockets. Just because we have free speech doesn't mean that it's real, and I'm very glad that there is free speech in this country, it doesn't mean that it's okay to lie. So, I will end by saying housing is a human right. This is about fairness. I urge everyone to vote yes on C. Thank you.
Denny Aznis, Frank Vella, Dan Evenhouse.
Good evening. I am a Pacifica resident, homeowner, a supporter of Measure C, and proud of the three city council members who are supporting the people of Pacifica, and I see it as supporting all of the people of Pacifica by supporting Measure C. I am and have been appalled at the lies that have been disseminated by the "No On C" forces, funded by out-of-town Realtors, and also including Mayor Mike O'Neill and council members, sue that or less, as part of the real estate forces that spread and repeat the lies. These are not alternate facts or misinformation, they are lies about Measure C to scare and mislead people. I think it's important to point out that rent stabilization is not just a local Pacifica issue. Realtors and developers have banded together nationally to try to quash all efforts to support rights for and needs of renters. The bully in this case is greedy Realtors, big and small, and once again, we must stand up to them. Vote yes on Measure C to once again protect people.
Frank Vella, Dan Evenhouse, Patricia Mahoney.
Good evening. Frank Vella from Lindemar. I'm also a local native and a Realtor and proud member of Sam Car and the National Association of Realtors. Last city council meeting, a very nice lady, 39-year resident, was here at the last, on September 25th. She stood here at the podium and stated that she was harassed while sitting in the crowd. She continued to say that she was very scared to be here, that she was trying to speak, the crowd yelled out to her, telling her to shut up and to harass her more. This kind of atmosphere should never happen. People have come to the council meetings lately and have left or have not spoken out because of this type of harassment that the majority of our council members seem to take a blind eye to when it's not in the interest of their supporters. I've heard bullying all night. That was bullying. Thankfully, Mike O'Neill and Sue Vodelos did stand up for this woman and showed support. I heard nothing from our other three council members, but that is normal behavior with certain members who are pushing the agenda of their few supporters onto the city. We have seen plenty of citizens come to the council meetings and state their wishes and concerns. At times, dozens of people. Our council members, DeGree, Martin, and Keener seem to handle it in this way. If the concerns fit the agenda of them and their supporters, they're all for it. If the comments made by concerned citizens don't fit their agenda, they ignore the pleas of the public. We've heard council members make the statements many times that they are voting on behalf of the people who couldn't be here to express their opinions. Our council members should be listening and understanding the wishes of the entire city and making decisions that are right for all, not just a few. Mike O'Neill and Sue Vodelos are the only ones doing so, and I thank them.
Dan Evenhouse, Patricia Mahoney, Dee Gould.
Thank you again for the opportunity to talk with the council members. I would urge you to vote yes on Measure C. I'm a homeowner in Pacifica, in Pacific Manor, I have been for some time, but I started out living in Pacifica as a renter. I have children that I hope would be renters someday. I have my children's friends, who, some of whom have already had to leave Pacifica, who, because of the high cost and rising costs of rents. I would, you've just voted to make Pacifica a sanctuary city. I would ask you to stop the economic deportation of citizens, residents of Pacifica. I think it's something that we all have a vested interest in. Thank you.
Patricia Mahoney, Dee Gould, Victoria Becker.
Hi, I just have to say that I'm not a public speaker, but my Irish is up, and having looked at all these signs around town, these huge signs that say "No On Measure C" with information that is inexcusable, it's not documented, there's no facts behind it, it's fake news as far as I'm concerned. Realtors are in the business to make money, there's no question about that. Property owners are in the business to make money because that's a business, okay? But how much money do they need to make? That's the question. My rent was boosted $900, okay? I'm a divorced mother with a child, and I'm not covered by Measure C, but I still support it because I'm in a townhouse. I still support it because it's a beginning. It's a beginning to help people. Do we want what's happening in San Francisco to happen in Pacifica? People have to relocate, they can't afford to live here because, you know, now it's going to be an elite group of people that live in Pacifica. Is that what we want? We want people who can only afford those high rents? I ask you, we don't want a Pacifica like that. It's happening in San Francisco, it's called gentrification, gentrification, and we have to stop it. We have to stop the, we put a cap on the rents, that's what I say. So, support Measure C. Thank you.
Dee Gould, Victoria Becker, Valerie Lappin.
You know, the very first city council meeting in Pacifica that I attended were the people from Pacific Skies talking about being evicted and losing their homes. And so this has been going on for years now, when we still have no protection for renters. So I think Measure C, which is like the most moderate measure you could imagine, is the least that we can do to pass. I don't understand why, you read something before public comment and you say you're not allowed to be disparaging or attacking of people, and you allow members of the city council to be called the Three Stooges. In my memory, the Three Stooges is not a positive remark to make about people. So I think people shouldn't say that, and I think that our city council people should be able to take positions without being called names and everything else. The reason that people are lying, why "No On C" is lying, is because they can't make the argument to people, they can't say, "We want the right to evict whoever we want, we want the right to be able to raise rents and make unconscionable profits. We are Realtors and we believe it will hurt our sales of commercial properties if there are regulations, so we feel that we're going to lose money." They won't put that on a billboard because nobody would vote for that, but that's the facts, and those were the arguments that were made when rent stabilization first came up to the city council. "We deserve a fair rate of return." This is market, you know, the rest of you are socialists, this is market capitalism. So why don't you be honest? Why don't you just say it? "We're here because of greed, 'No On C' is about greed, that's what it's about, and then we can vote." Greed versus renters. Thank you.
Victoria Becker, Valerie Lappin.
Hi, I've been leafleting outside of Pacific Manor Safeway in support of Measure C. Once I get through the lies that a measure, that the "No On C" campaign put out all over town, funded by Sam Car, people immediately, almost 100% across the board, say they will vote for it. This is because they are either renters whose rent has gone up exorbitantly, they know people, or, or they've rented themselves for many years, or they know people in the situation. We need to support Measure C to prevent massive displacement of seniors, teachers, and nurses. The city needs to take the, the lies, needs to put something on the city website that explains that the, the fact that it's considered, that the "No On C" campaign is saying that is a tax is completely wrong, and this, and the city needs to do that now. Thanks.
Valerie Lappin, and Valerie's is the last card I have on this item. If anybody else wishes to speak, I need a card, please. Valerie?
Hello again, my name's Valerie Lappin. I'm a homeowner here in Pacifica. I love living in Pacifica, but I didn't come here under the best of circumstances. I had lost my previous home during the dot-com explosion. I still vividly remember the terror of receiving an eviction notice with only 30 days to find a new home. So I can't, so I come here, come to my decision to support Measure C with those memories in mind. I don't want any of my neighbors to have to go through what I experienced. Now, you just voted on the sanctuary ordinance, and I thank council members Keener, DeGree, and Martin for your strong leadership. We just saw a campaign of disinformation in an effort to defeat Sanctuary City. We're also seeing a campaign of disinformation in an effort to defeat Measure C. I'm starting to see a pattern here, and I'm getting very concerned about it. I understand the rules of oral communications and that you cannot answer any of my questions, so I'll ask you a rhetorical question. Why the lies?
Okay, I have no other yellow cards, so I'll close oral communications. Is there somebody else coming up? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't have a card. I'm sorry. Can you state your name, please?
Janet Brager. I, I did have a card, but I-
Oh, I did call your name, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Because I know when people are talking, I'm kind of hard of hearing, and it echoes, so I just hope I'm not talking like that. I just, I'm voting no on Measure C, but I'm not a landlord, I'm a tenant, but there's just something wrong with it, and I can't, don't know what it is. It's like taking the landlord by the cunios, so to speak, and he's a guy who's, a landlord is a person who was able to buy this building, and then we're taking him, controlling him. And if I were a landlord, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't buy here if that happened. I know it's outrageous, the amount that everything costs, buying a building or buying a house, paying the rent, it's, and it's insane, but I just don't think control like that is a good idea, that, that's, I don't understand. I do know that someone in San Francisco, where they have rent control, this man was bothering them so much, and they couldn't get him out, they had to pay $50,000 to get that guy out. Anyway, that's impossible, and what can happen? What do I, I have 48 seconds, I guess. And I know another person with a place in San Francisco, and she's not even renting anyone, because when the renter gets in, they're controlling the landlord. She doesn't, she loses control over her place. There's no like give and take between the landlord and the tenants, it's, I have control and, that's, that's all I can think of.
And I'm looking through the cards, and I can't find one for your, oh, I do, did find it, I did call you, so.
Yeah, Janet-
Okay, I don't, you didn't, you don't need to fill out a card.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item, or oral communications?
I have a question. To the attorney.
Okay, I was just going to go to council communication, do you want to ask it then, or?
Yes. Last time and this time, several members of the public have requested an answer about the tax for one thing, and I also don't know if the public understands why any of the five of us can't answer things about Measure C. Can you clarify that at some point?
Well, I, I can clarify that last comment. There is case law that prohibits the council or any staff person from extending or expending any staff, any public resources in favor of or against any ballot measure.
While we're on duty.
Correct. While you are performing duties as a council member or staff as a staff member. Now, with regard to, there have been a lot of questions that have been raised tonight with regard to clarifications, I think, or information regarding certain provisions of the rent stabilization measure. I know I have been in contact with the city manager, and while we cannot engage in advocacy, the city absolutely can provide information, unbiased, objective information regarding the provisions and other regulations in the ordinance. And the city manager has directed me and staff to provide clarifications to the frequently asked questions that is currently on the council website, on the city website, and we intend to do that, if not tomorrow, Wednesday at the latest.
Thank you.
So I close oral communications and now it's time for council communications. Does anybody have anything?
Can we have a, can we take a break? Just a five-minute break or something?
Sure, sure. So it's 8:51, come back at five minutes? Nine? Okay, nine o'clock.
Realistically, yeah. Voice goes longer than you think.
I know it does.
So I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please, for the meeting of October 9th, 2017. Next item on the agenda is council communications. The purpose of council communications is for council members to promote each other's rights and potential interest to other council members such as youth agencies and so forth. Sue, Valerie?
I attended the council, the Chambers Oktoberfest, had a good time. I, everybody else, I think, went to Tom Ball's celebration of life. I also attended the Council Cities Monthly Event, which is a great event that you get to council members from other cities in the area. It's a big event to go to. Also, I wanted to remind everybody that the Christmas tree lighting in Rockaway will be on December 3rd, so please put that in your calendar. We have more and more people every year and it's a great event. Thanks.
Okay. So December 3rd, okay. I guess I'll be getting a phone call. Sue DeGree?
The ceremony for Tom Ball was excellent, it was held at the Sanchez, Sanchez Library, and was very fitting for him and encouraging for the rest of us to continue his great drive and belief in libraries. Also managed to get over to the Historical Society, and I regret that I don't remember the lady's name, but I can see her face. She had been one of the first Pacifica Historical Society members, starting the Historical Society, and one of the founders, and that, I came at the tail end of that, but it was quite a tribute to her as well. The airport meeting, I would like to clear up some maybe confusion. The letters that we requested, the draft letters, as far as I know, are supposed to come back to the city council as a whole. As mentioned many times, the San Francisco airport issues since NextGen has come upon us have been evolving in a very convoluted manner. And part of, it's a very long, long story, some of you have heard it, and I'm not going to go through all of it. So where are we at this point? At this point, the FAA can actually talk to us because the lawsuit against Phoenix has been determined, and so now they don't have to keep silence on some of the questions we've asked. The initiative that was started between them and the roundtable is still going forward. They're at the point of determining some of the suggestions from the roundtable, whether they will be feasible or not feasible. The legislative subcommittee is still looking towards what types of things can we talk about to bring up to the roundtable that would be within legislative command, and those seem to be, at the moment, very narrow, shall we say. Part of the issue of the airport is that the FAA works under a mandate from Congress, and years and years and years ago, Congress took away the mandate to have noise impacts on an equal footing with safety and efficiency. Efficiency being fuel consumption and saving time. So until they receive a mandate from Congress, looks like an uphill battle from that point of view. On the other hand, we are attempting both locally and by joining what is called NOISE, National, whatever, about noise, it's very fitting. But that organization has, does exist, it would cost $4,000 to join, and that's giving the roundtable a little bit of a discount. And part of what they do is interact with the National League of Cities, we don't know exactly how much, but they also have lobbyists that work across the nation and in Washington, DC. So that gives us a glimmer of hope that lobbying with legislators from the point of view of being national rather than just California or just San Francisco Airport is promising from that point of view. So we have a glimmer of hope, shall we say.
Okay, are you, just a follow-up question. Should we put on the agenda authorizing some funds to be, to join this group for noise at the airport?
Well, I thought we were going to determine a smorgasbord of what things could the Pacifica City Council do, what would we join in with the airport roundtable, and whether legally we can say what community members can do outside of the roundtable and cities. So we had talked at one time as possibly cities joining other cities to create some kind of power that way. Putting money on that smorgasbord, I mean-
Well, just 4,000 divided by 20 cities probably doesn't seem that much.
From the roundtable's perspective, that $4,000 is there, it's in the budget, it's whether or not the roundtable-
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to find out.
It's there.
Okay, okay. So Deirdre?
I just want to say that Public Works gave a great presentation to the CCAG Bike and Pedestrian Committee for two grant applications. We're going to be scoring them in a couple weeks, so hopefully here if we get something soon. The other thing is I just want to remind everyone that there's two ballot measures that are coming up for a vote on November 7th, Measure C and Measure G. So remind everyone to vote and remind everyone to read both measures. That's it.
Okay, John?
I just want to welcome Kevin Woodhouse. Your first day, your first meeting, it probably feels like we've thrown you in on the deep end, but that's okay. You know, one thing that's evident to me tonight is that, that you like this stuff. I mean, you like the policy kind of stuff and, you know, I think we'll, we'll both be relatively happy together. So, welcome.
I'll be happy too, Kevin, just so you know. So, how many of us are going to be happy? Okay, John and I attended the articulation meeting, which is a joint meeting every month or every quarter with this Pacifica School District, Jefferson High School District, and the Water District. So that's always a good opportunity to hear what other government entities are doing in town. Let's see, and I also attended the Tom Ball Memorial, it was well-attended at the Sanchez Library. And I also attended the Success Summit at Skyline College, and it's really something to see what they've been doing with their bond issue and how, you know, they've been investing the money in. Also, the topic was interesting, it was affordable housing, and they brought in some speakers in terms of the, you know, jobs you need, et cetera, et cetera, in the area. I also attended the library JPA, which was real interesting, is that we don't have room for it really in our libraries due to facilities, but the Maker's Square concept. And it's something that they are putting in a lot of the libraries in the, on the peninsula. And it's basically for people to learn how to do different crafts, whether it's cooking, sewing, knitting, woodworking, plumbing, whatever. And they've developed this, they have a big room and they've developed where they can change the item being worked on at the, you know, for whatever class is going on. And it's something that's provided by the libraries over the hill, and if you need, if you wanted to go to that, you might want to check a library over the hill. And after that, any staff, no more council?
I have one thing.
Go ahead, John.
One thing.
Yeah, for-
I would like to see if we could get a different kind of lights that are shining on our faces. These lights are just hotter than Bee Jesus, and there's a lot of them, and I'm told that there are better alternatives available. So maybe Van can tell us sometime what those are. Not now, because we can't discuss it, but, you know, sometime.
We might want to wait till after winter, because these are the only heat in this building.
Oh, well, good point, good point.
Yeah, so we might want to wait till after winter, maybe about March or April. Okay, I see John, Van calling. You know, I think we could use new microphones, too. But anyhow, Sue?
Regarding adjourning this meeting, Carolyn Livinggood passed away and she was a writer in the peninsula and very, very active in many communities and very active at the National Cemetery for Veterans. So she passed away in early October, so. And then in honor of all the people, I guess there's floods, there's earthquakes, and there's the big fires now.
Next item is, oh, John, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. So Kevin, any staff communications?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make two brief comments. One is, I did just want to take this time to express my gratitude to the council as well as to community members and the staff of the organization for just a warm welcome and making my transition nice here. As you're aware, over the last few weeks, I've spent a significant amount of time in Pacifica, and, you know, every business that I've entered and person I've met, cup of coffee I've had, food that I've eaten, has been fantastic. So, you know, I just take that chance to say thank you as I officially begin my first day today. The second item, segueing off of Councilmember DeGree's comment about the fires that are, you know, regional agencies are experiencing in North Bay, through our mutual aid agreements, we do have both police units and fire units up there assisting with what they're struggling with. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, and we hope, of course, that everything turns out okay.
And I do think that actually we should be commending our fire department, because as we all know here, one of the things we appreciate is our open space and the hillsides and everything, and we are still maintaining a low fire rating from, because of what our fire department does and the capabilities they have. So I don't know, at some point that might be interesting for the public to see is how we achieve that rating, why we achieve it, and how we are in comparable cities, whatever. Okay, any, no other staff communications? Okay, moving on to the next item will be public hearing, public hearing on amending Chapter 9 of Title 6 of the Pacifica Municipal Code to eliminate confusion and contradiction.
Honorable Mayor, so the proposed action on this is to open the public hearing and continue to October 23rd.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Okay. So I will move to continue the-
I have to do the public hearing.
Huh?
I have to, ask the public.
Oh.
I have no yellow cards, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I close the public hearing.
No, John, go. So I'll move to continue the public hearing to the city council's regular meeting of October 23rd, 2017.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Please vote. And that motion passes 5 to 0. Next item is consideration, recology of the coast rate adjustment for 2018. Proposed action, move that the city council adopt a resolution of the City of Pacifica directing staff to issue notice of public hearing for new or increased solid waste collection services fees and charges. Okay.
Honorable Mayor, members of the Pacifica City Council, my name is Lorenzo Heinz, I am the Assistant City Manager. I have, sitting to my left, Chris Porter, and she is the general manager of our local Recology of the Coast franchise. So before you is a proposal to increase the rates that recology charges its customers by 6.66%. Little background, in February 2010, the City of Pacifica entered into a franchise agreement with Recology of the Coast for recyclable materials, organic materials, and solid waste collection services. The agreement was amended in October 2016, extending the contract to December 31, 2022. Under the agreement, recology must submit a rate increase adjustment for city council approval. The rate increase, or the rate adjustment for rate period number nine, and that's period of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018, requires submittal of documentation to the city by September 1st, 2017. The city's received that submittal and is in the process of reviewing recology's rate adjustment request of 6.66%. This is an index-based rate adjustment pursuant to Section 11.03 of the franchise agreement between the city and recology. The rates have not been raised since 2016. A comparison of the rates between current and those requested to be increased is attached. So as far as the rate methodology, for the past, or 2018 will be the sort of, if we look at 2018 as the fourth year in a four-year cycle, 2015, recology had a increase of 1.87%. In 2016, they had a decrease of 9.37% in the rates. 2017, that decrease remained in effect and they did not raise the rates. In 2018, they are proposing an increase of 6.66%. If you averaged all of those figures out, you'd actually end up with a four-year average of a negative 0.21%. So essentially, the rates would be flat over four years. So in accordance with the agreement between the City of Pacifica, recology, and Lionel Indy, a public notice will be sent to all customers liable for payment of the proposed fee increase informing them of a public hearing on December 11th, 2017, and the process for protest hearing. In order to meet the 45-day noticing period, notices will be mailed on or before October 27th, and Attachment 2 has, shows a copy of the notice. Individuals have the opportunity to comment on the proposed rate increase during the 45-day period as well as during the public hearing on December 11th. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the city clerk shall complete the tabulation of all protests received and shall report the results of the tabulation to the city council upon completion. If the review of the protests received demonstrates that the number received is manifestly less than one-half of the parcel served by the city with respect to the fee, which is subject to the protest, then the clerk may advise the city council of the absence of the majority protest without determining the validity of all protest. As far as its fiscal impact, as proposed and per the methodology in the franchise agreement, the rate adjustment increase is 6.66%. As I mentioned, there are no increases or decreases in city, to the city fees that are charged to recology. Residential customers, most of whom subscribe to 20-gallon cans, will see a monthly increase of about $1.44 per month, or $17.28 annually. So we respectfully request that council move the resolution of the City of Pacifica directing staff to issue the notice of the public hearing for new or increased solid waste collection service fees and charges.
John?
First off, what is an indexed-based rate adjustment?
Within the franchise agreement, in Attachment K, there is a rate-setting methodology, and in that rate-setting methodology, they pretty much break out every cost that recology is allowed to add into their rate calculations. Each cost is subject to a certain indexy, indexy that you will find with the Bureau of Labor Statistics. There are some that are CPI- There are some that are CPIW, there are some that are CPIU, um, and so...
CPIW and U?
These are various flavors of the Consumer Price Index.
Yeah.
Ones for urban consumers, ones for wage, and so the, um, the franchise agreement is very specific about which indices goes with which cost.
Great, um, and, um, along those lines, I understand that, uh, recology, uh, recently negotiated a, a new labor agreement, is that right? A new labor agreement?
Um, yes, recology signed a five-year CBA in January of 2018 with, um, a 3.4 percent wage increase.
3.4 or 4.4?
3.4.
3.4, okay, um, and of those, uh, of those folks that, that work for you, uh, how many are residents of Pacifica?
Eighty percent of our employees are residents of Pacifica.
Eighty percent, okay. Um, and the, um, the rate increase, uh, um, I don't want to say, how is it calculated? But, um, is it, um, is it the same percentage increase, um, whether you use the 20-gallon can or larger cans for, for the garbage?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, and just for, um, just for my own information, what's the percentage of, uh, customers that, that use the, the smallest garbage cans, the 20-gallon bins?
Fifty-four percent of our customers use the 20-gallon cart.
Forty-four percent, okay, that's great, okay, thank you very much.
Deirdre?
Um, I probably should have asked this question earlier, Lorenzo, before tonight, but, um, math is not my strong suit. The negative, uh, number for the average?
Mm-hmm.
Can you just explain a negative average?
I just added up all four, four numbers and divided them by four. So I took a, a positive point eight, 1.87, I took a negative 9.37, uh, took a zero, and then I took a, um, six, positive 6.66 percent, that hopefully should get you.
To the, to the interpretation for the common...
Yes, and so...
Is just that?
What I was trying to, yeah, what I was trying to sort of explain in general to the folks out there is that the rates essentially have been flat for the last four years. Uh, we saw a small bump in 2015, we saw, you know, an over 9 percent decrease in 2016. Recology held that 9 percent increase in 2017, and now, I think it's just a situation where the economy is now caught up with them, and it's, it's, uh, you know, they've got to, they've got to increase the rates.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
And, um, I love the increased recycling, by the way, um, thank you. Uh, I, oh, can, Chris, can you just clarify, there's buzz out there about, uh, donations that recology makes to organizations such as Pacificans Care, Pacific Beach Coalition, and people are concerned that those, uh, those donations come from the, their rate budget, whatever budget that is, but can you just clarify for the public where that comes from?
Yes, and thank you for asking that question. Um, recology, there is not a line item on our budget for donations, and it is the philosophy of recology as a whole to immerse ourselves in the communities that we serve. And, um, you know, there was, there was talk about, uh, that we just help the environmental groups, and, and that's not accurate. We, this past year, we have, of course, we were the largest contributor to the Beach Coalition, yes, but we've also, we're one of the largest contributors to the school district for quite a few different things, like, um, the construction of a greenhouse up at Sunset Ridge. And there was a van purchased for, um, shuttling of, um, disabled children, that they needed to get a new van. There was, um, uh, drought-tolerant landscaping put in Ocean Shore School. Um, we were the largest contributor to the Resource Center of Palma Lusa. I hope I said that right, um, Pacificans Care, um, the Rotary, the Chamber, and probably others that I can't think of right now, but, um, because we, you know, we are involved in the community, we live in the community. I've been the General Manager of this company for 33 years, and, um, I've been involved in every organization, I think, that's in this town, one way or the other. So, um, any donations we make do not, do not impact the rates whatsoever. It is from, the corporate recology gives every General Manager, um, free rein to contribute to areas in their jurisdictions that they feel, um, we need to be involved in, and that's what we attempt to do in this town.
Thank you for the clarification, and I also appreciate that you polled the public, too, for feedback. Uh, I think that's an important part of your job, and I appreciate you do that, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just, just wanted to inject, uh, you heard me use the phrase competitive advantage. Uh, that is one of recology's competitive advantages, is that they ensure that they immerse themselves in the communities that they serve, in addition to their major advocacy on recycling. So those are, those are sort of their business principles.
Um, also, I know they used to be employee-owned, is recology still employee-owned?
Recology is 100% employee-owned.
Right, I did that, okay, Sue?
I just want to say, you've been there through the long haul, with, before, and the, during, and continuing, thank you.
It has been a long haul, too.
Sue Varlos?
Thank you for all your donation to the community. I know you were working on the sign, even in Rockaway Beach, and, um, you guys contribute to everything, so, thank you for that.
Okay, so, uh, that's the comments from council, is, I have no yellow cards, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I close it, bring it back to council, so, Sue Varlos?
Make the motion, I would move, is that, move that the City Council adopt a resolution of the City of Pacifica directing staff to issue notice of public hearing for new and increased solid waste collection services fees and charges.
Second?
Second.
And John Skeener's seconds, please vote. And that motion passes five-zero. Next item on the agenda is appointments to Beautification Committee, Emergency Preparedness, Economic Development, and the Planning Commission. Um, I do have one question for Kathy. Economic Development Committee, it says select one, then the number three. So we need to check three boxes, correct?
It's three, select three.
Yeah, so select three boxes.
There are three expiring terms.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, I talked with the city attorney, and perhaps the, uh, council would like to consider for the econom- uh, no, excuse me, Emergency Commission, that we, um, increase the number by at least one, and that if we agree, we can do that this evening, is that correct?
Well, no, you can agree to, depending upon what the council wants to do, you could agree to schedule for another agenda, the resolution to increase the number of the committee members. You couldn't adopt a resolution increasing the number tonight.
Okay, so we, we don't vote, any vote, we put it off to us to, uh, agendize whether or not we want to do it?
You could do that, or you could vote to appoint one member to the committee, and then ask that staff bring back a resolution that would expand the committee so that you would then be able to make another appointment at a future date.
Okay.
Would we have to go through interviews again, or could we just appoint from this list? If we vote to expand the committee, could we just...
It would not be legally required to renotice and re-advertise.
Okay, so we could just use this list, then?
You, you could.
Okay.
So that is my request of council.
Okay, I have no problem agendizing that.
Do I need to make that a motion?
Yeah, well, it, it depends on what, my suggestion is that you, you take the issue about the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission separately from the other committees, if you're going to be addressing the other committees in total, otherwise, take them all separately. But we should address the Emergency Preparedness Committee separately than these other committees, where you don't have a desire to expand.
Okay, so I can ask to pull the emergency, um, vote for the, for the time, for, while we vote on the other?
Yes, okay.
Um, so, does that mean we're delaying, um, appointing the person that we would, tonight?
No, I'm just saying, I, I'm not sure how the council wants to go about addressing each one of these appointments. So my suggestion is simply, if, if we're going to address the Emergency Preparedness Commission, that we just treat that separately, and then have a separate discussion on that committee and the appointments to that committee.
Okay.
If we're gonna add to it, that's the future, if there's a possibility we might add to it at a future time, why don't we just vote for that one person with the empty spot now?
You, you can do that, I'm not saying, no, I'm just saying, let's just have the discussion on the Emergency Preparedness Committee, separate and apart from the discussion about the Beautification Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission. Tonight? Yes, tonight, tonight, after, I, I don't know how, I don't know, are you going to take each one of these committees separately?
Usually, we have a separate motion for each committee.
Correct, but are you going to be tabulating, so, I, what I'm asking you to do now is to only tabulate votes for the Beautification Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission?
And the Economic Development?
No, and then we will do that...
Oh, no, yeah, there's, that one's okay.
That one's okay, it's the emergency.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, the Economic Development Committee.
Now you're thoroughly confusing me.
Yes, for those three, tabulate for those three now, and then, after you make your motions on those committees, then we will come back and deal with the Emergency Preparedness Commission.
So we're passing all of them down, except Emergency Preparedness this, right now?
Correct, correct.
Do you want us to keep Emergency Preparedness?
Yes, yes.
We can all understand instruction.
Oh, wait, I think she sent the wrong one down.
Well, I'll send it back.
It's all right, mine is awkward.
There's a square.
It's folded, and it has the holes in it, okay, that's mine.
It's not even that late, it's like...
It is.
We're not even having to vote to extend the meeting.
Now, what do I do with these?
Confuse us all.
Pass them back to you.
Yeah. I was wondering whose phone that was. The media was going to announce it, everybody. You can plug it in right here.
Oh, I didn't remember that, I got one right there. I did. Dragging today.
This is the only, that's where they come in and turn these lights on a couple hours ahead of time, to try to heat the room up.
Should be in the staff report.
That's what.
In winter, in winter.
It's freezing out there.
Yeah, I feel like I'm getting losing vision at times.
Yeah, it all looks like, we all look...
You can't see very many people out there.
Okay, so, um, the person receiving the most...
I can hear you, Kath.
The person receiving the most selections for the Beautification Advisory Committee is Vicky Sunstrom.
Okay.
Okay, so, you have a motion for Vicky Sunstrom?
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote. And, congratulations, Vicky's appointed five-zero. Now I need to have a, can I open the public hearing for all of them at once, or do I need to do one each individually?
Actually, you should have the public comment period now, before you vote.
Oh, I have no, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? I have no yellow cards?
Any of them.
See, on any appointment? Seeing no one, I close the public hearing, okay? So, congratulations, Vicky's appointed five-zero to Beautification.
Sorry, this takes a few minutes.
Doing Economic Development?
Yeah, okay, three people for, and there's what, seven advocates or something?
How many people are on that committee?
There's a lot, there's like seven or eight, it's pretty big.
Yeah, but, three people, I mean, you know.
Well, all three just, they're turned up, and, yeah, there's like seven or eight on there.
Yeah, it's a bunch of ex-officials.
Trying to help out, yeah. No, we're waiting for...
After this.
Yeah, we're done after the appointments, yeah.
I seem to be missing one council member's packet.
For which position?
For the Economic Development.
My Emergency Preparedness.
Make sure everybody hands it in there, to your Economic Development.
Oh, yeah.
Emergency, right?
No, I'm sorry, I have it, never mind, sorry.
God, really make this look bad.
All right.
I know, especially, yeah, I know, especially the way you were acting.
Okay, so the applicants, um, receiving the most selections were Michelle Hansberry, Grace Sobieski, Sobieski, and Daisy Fong.
I need a motion? Sue?
I'll move that we accept Michelle, Grace, and Daisy to serve on the Economic Development Committee.
Second?
A second?
Deirdre's seconds, please vote. And that motion passes five-zero. Congratulations to Grace, Michelle, and Daisy.
All right. An easier way to do this?
And the person receiving the most selections on the Planning Commission is David Lil.
Uh-huh, motions, please, Sue Varlos?
I move that we accept David Lil onto the Planning Commission.
Hold on, Kathy, you need to fix the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sorry.
I move that we accept David Lil onto the Planning Commission.
Second.
All right, we had DeGries second, Varlos first, please vote. And that motion passes five-zero. Congratulations, David.
So now I would suggest that you talk about the Emergency Preparedness Committee in terms of... terms of, would you like to expand the number of the committee? And have that deliberation, and then if so, would you like to hold appointments for all committee, new committee members until a resolution can be brought back to you that would expand the committee? Or would you like to make one appointment tonight, which you can do, and then bring back another, a resolution to expand the committee, and then make a second appointment on that, at that same meeting, which you can also do?
Is there a third option to vote in that?
The third option would be not to expand the committee at all and just make the one appointment tonight.
There's not a fourth option, then?
Well, there's any, I, that's the only options I've heard. Is there another option that you'd like to discuss?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm curious if there's a fourth option, which would be that we would vote to extend the, expand the ordinance to allow for another commission member, and vote both of those commission members in tonight?
No, we cannot do that.
Okay. Just asking. Can we ask questions about this?
Oh, absolutely. Now, now, I'm done.
Okay.
So now you can deliberate on all of those options, except for the last one that you cannot do.
So I don't know the correct term, but what does, do our bylaws, that's not the right, say about the committee and the number of people that are on, serving on the committee? Is there a reason why you want to add more? Do people not show up when they're supposed to show up? Why?
Can I answer that? Yes.
Well, a couple. For one thing, with all the natural disasters happening all over the place, I want to keep the continuity that's there, but I also want to give an opportunity for new eyes and some experience to come in as well.
People serve on the committee? Seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah. And I would just add that it's really a commission that is primarily, they're active in the CERT program. That's, that's what they do mostly. Not all of them, but most of them are active in the CERT program. And having one more commission member who's also active in the CERT program would probably be a plus.
I, I don't have a problem expanding the committee, because I do know they're very active, and they each seem to have their forte, so I would support moving, the only concerns I would have is that it would be an even number one, and then if you expand, so it would be eight people instead of seven. And the other issue is that when you expand a committee, you then move the majority to have a quorum at a meeting is higher. And sometimes that can be a challenge, as we see in our Planning Commission with the absences there. So that's the only concerns I have with this, but this isn't a committee, other than when we were tearing down those apartment buildings, they didn't really, they don't have many judicial hearings, right?
The only other sorts of judicial hearings they have are, they serve as an appeal board for toes.
Parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I don't know if that could be an issue. You, I mean, that's just a concern, that's all. But I have no, no problem expanding, well, I have no problem talking about it. And I would postpone making the appointments till next meeting.
I would be okay with that as well. I think each committee, each commission member brings something very unique to the commission, and so, but also, we interviewed some really interesting people, and they would bring something fresh and new to the commission as well.
I agree.
So I would agree, and I would also agree with postponing.
Yeah, that's okay by me.
So I think you have the sense of the council?
So you, you want to expand it to eight or nine?
Can we discuss that at the next?
Yes.
Okay. Just to be sure we're clear on exactly what their duties, because like, you know, I didn't know PBNR did tree appeals until we had the tree appeal.
So, so we will have the staff person who is charged with staffing that committee come and answer all the questions that you have, and you can determine that night what the number is that you want to expand it to. I didn't, I didn't catch whether or not you wanted to make any appointments tonight or not.
I, I expressed my opinion, I think.
Consensus was to wait, all of us said wait.
Okay. I think mine sounds interesting.
I think it might be good too to find.
What? No, I don't know.
They're busy. So we'll just have our own meeting too, so this is.
Say it wasn't late, what time is it?
The three of them are just talking. We'll just have our own meeting.
It's like, I'm going to have to make a motion for reconsideration.
Because it's so hot?
Can?
They've already voted, that's done.
And it's hot tonight. Really, really hot.
So it appears that, you know, the council should know, with regard to the Planning Commission appointment, that, it appears that the name that was given to you as having the most tabulations from the council was an incorrect name. There, there was another name who had actually the highest votes. Now, the council can either stand by their appointment, which is currently made and done, and that action has been taken, or, once the council learns who the other name is, the council could then do a motion for reconsideration, which means somebody who voted in the majority would ask for a motion for reconsideration, another council member would second it, the council would then vote to reconsider the appointment to the Planning Commission, and then if that's approved by a majority of the council, then you could reconsider that appointment and make another appointment, or the same appointment.
I would be in favor of reconsideration, yeah.
I think I understood it, so we can, because there was an error, we can, but we voted, we can reconsider and go back to the majority number?
Yes, you can reconsider it tonight.
Okay.
So somebody needs to make a motion to reconsider?
I move that we reconsider.
Then we need a second?
I'll second.
Now we need a vote?
Need a vote?
There was a mistake.
Yes, because everybody voted in favor.
So that motion for reconsideration passes 5 to 0.
So now, you can reconsider your prior appointment and just treat this as a new agenda item.
So.
Now Kathy?
Yeah.
You go ahead and explain what happened.
Okay, so I did report that David Lil had the most selections in error, my apologies. It was actually Ryan Kraske who received more nominations than David Lil. So.
So I would move that we appoint Ryan Kraske to the Planning Commission.
Second.
The only concern I have is, you know, he was applying for the Planning Commission. I specifically asked him if he knew what a design plan, specific plan was for a street, and he didn't know that. So I'm just putting that on the record, and that's the reason I'm voting no.
Are we ready for a vote? Did we get a second?
You got your second.
Yes, I did. Are we ready? We got a vote.
So that vote passes for, tis one? Thank you.
Are we finished?
And there's no, is staff? Jeez, every time I want to talk, they're talking to each other. Michelle? Michelle, one of the things when we come back about the Emergency Preparedness Commission, could we just have like, maybe we don't even need the names, because I'm not trying to single anybody out, but what's the attendance? Like, has there been a lot of absences where maybe we, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And I'm not even asking for the specific names of commissioners, just was there a quorum, was there not a quorum, that type of thing?
Would you like that in the staff report?
Yeah.
Or would you just like the staff person to be able to address that at the meeting?
In the staff report's fine.
Okay.
Either's fine. I just, okay, so we keep this, okay. Okay, so the meeting's adjourned.
In honor of?
In, in honor of Carolyn Livinggood, and the people in Vegas and other victims of the many natural disasters.
Thank you.